Are we set to go? Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty P M. And may we have roll call? Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Scazola.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
Mayor Bybee. Present. At this point, um, I'd like to invite, I'd like to welcome first of all, our Assembly Member Mark Berman to our council meeting and his assistant Pablo. And if you could come up and lead the pledge of allegiance.
Great. Your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our first item of business tonight is a presentation of state funding from Council, Assembly Member Berman's office. And if you'd like to come to the podium, um, I'd like to, um, say thank you on behalf of the council and the city for your efforts and your leadership in assisting the city with securing some grant funding for our city hall ADA improvements. It's just going to benefit, you know, our Campbell community and the citizens that we serve daily. So thank you very much, and I'll, I'll turn the podium over to you and let you make a few remarks.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Mayor Bybee. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to come and present a very big check tonight. Uh, I'm very pleased to be here to present this symbolic check to the city of Campbell for five hundred thousand dollars. My understanding is that this money will be used to make needed changes to the structures, uh, to the structure of city hall, which hasn't been updated since the seventies, and it will help fund renovations to public counters and public meeting spaces, as well as accessibility improvements to the main entrance. I believe there may also be improvements made here in the council chambers. City government provides so many vital services to residents. For those who don't know, I've served on, on the Palo Alto City Council for four years before I was elected to the assembly. And it, uh, city government gives residents a platform to be a voice for their community. We therefore need to ensure that all residents, especially those with mobility issues, are able to have access to their government. I was very happy to be able to secure this funding in the budget during what was a very challenging budget year this year. I may be fairly new to representing Campbell, but it has been a great experience becoming more acquainted with the city. Uh, in fact, I spoke to the Campbell chapter of AARP this morning at the community center. If you're unfamiliar with my work or have questions about what my office can do for you, please go to my website or call our district office. And as the mayor mentioned, I have with me today my field representative Pablo Velazquez, uh, who covers Campbell for my office. And I also, uh, if I may, just want to highlight that we have an upcoming community coffee here in Campbell, uh, which I'll be hosting with Mayor Bybee. This is an opportunity for constituents to speak with me one-on-one and hear about some of what the legislature has accomplished during the legislative session. Uh, and we're going to have that community coffee at Orchard Valley Coffee just down the street from eight A M. to nine thirty A M. on Friday, November third. And, uh, residents of Campbell should be receiving a mailer in the coming week or so with more information about that. Uh, so thank you again to the council, uh, for inviting me this evening, and I'm very excited to, don't cash it. But, but very excited to, to present this, this symbolic check.
Thank you very much, Mark. And I know that our, my colleagues would like to say a few words before we come down officially, accept the check and take pictures. So I'll start with Councilmember Fratato.
Very much. Welcome to our council meeting. And again, thank you very much for securing this funding. And I know it was a challenging year for the state in terms of its budget and its priorities and so on. But this, uh, funding will help us, as was mentioned, for our ADA improvements, uh, to serve our residents, uh, better in the cities. Thanks again. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Yes, thank you very much, Mark. Um, one of our strategic goals throughout the year has been inclusion with our community and accessibility. So this falls right in line, and I am personally really big on accessibility. And I've been guys about the counters for seven years, so it's nice to see that we're actually getting money, and I appreciate all the effort and the difficult budget here.
My pleasure.
I'm glad you are represented.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Welcome, Margaret. It's great to, uh, see you and, uh, welcome you here. I, I, I know you may be new to representing Campbell, but, uh, we're, we're lucky to have you. And, um, I have the pleasure of knowing you, Assembly Member, having worked with them, uh, uh, before, uh, and I know you'll do a great job representing us. Um, I, I, I won't add on too much, but, uh, uh, you know, as the vice mayor said, this is a, a key value for, for us and for our residents. I think it's a part of what makes Campbell special, too. If you just walk around downtown, you see people with accessibility devices, with mobility devices uh, from all walks of, of life. Uh, and so to be able to carry those same values through. Um, as, as I know, I, I know, you know, coming from the municipal level, um, that kind of funding from the state really makes a big difference for, for city budgets like ours. So, uh, thank you. It's going to have a real back look forward to working with you. Thanks.
And Councilmembers Scazola.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo my fellow council members' comments and also, man, you came out of gates swinging. I really appreciate it, you know? That is a big check, and I, I know our community really appreciates it, and thank you so much.
So if we could take a time out here and go down and take a picture, that would be great.
I, I should say, I know that Campbell's favorite son, uh, my, my colleague, uh, Assembly Member Lowe, got more resources for Campbell for the, the eight years that he represented Campbell. That's just more work for me to do. So, challenge accepted. And especially, it's right, especially in better budget years than this one. Come on it. Good. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah. Councilmen in all one place.
Honor of the big chief.
Yeah, yeah, good to see you. No, no, you can't, can't, can't do that on mobile deposits.
I did want to send to give you.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you very much.
Getting the props this evening.
Yeah.
I also wanted to mention, I, I received a mail, a flyer about the senior.
Scam stopper.
You might want to mention that.
Yeah, I'd love to. So the mayor just reminded me, um, and now I'm going to have to look up on my account, on my phone. Uh, but, so every year, and I talked about this a lot, uh, at the, with the AARP folks, um, this morning, every year we do a virtual, well, now we do a virtual senior scam stopper. Uh, because we all know that there's so many bad people out there, bad actors that are trying to scam us out of our money. If y'all are like me, you get three phone calls and four texts and five phishing emails a day. Um, and so we do the senior scam stopper. It's going to be, uh, the day before the Campbell coffee. It's going to be Thursday, November second at two P M., and it's going to be virtual. You can find information about it on my website. Uh, and this is an opportunity for the California State Licensing Board and other state agencies to talk to folks about the current kind of scams that they see happening uh, out in the community and, and also to make sure that folks know where they can go if they've been a victim of a scam, or if they're, or if they're curious, if they have questions about something that they're being pitched. Um, I told the folks this morning, up in, in North County and South San Mateo County, uh, there's been something going on where, where a group is going around. Apparently they're, I think, Irish, um, and they're going to people's homes, and they're saying, hey, we're here, we're in the neighborhood, um, doing roof inspections. We can offer you a roof inspection for free. And then they go up on your roof, they break something, and then they charge you to fix it. Um, and, and this is something that's, that's targeting especially seniors in our community. So, uh, seniors can't stop. The senior scam stopper is a great event, uh, uh, November second, I think I said, two P M. Thanks so much.
And I know that, um, I, I received a mailer today in the mail, so I'm sure that the other residents will be getting that in the next day or so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thanks for the.
And again, Mark, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. We know that you're, um, have, have a lot of demands on your time. So we, we do appreciate you being here tonight and presenting the check, and, and really thank you for your efforts to, um, assist our city with, uh, a much-needed improvement to our, to our counters and our public access.
It's my pleasure and looking forward to coming back a lot more often.
Great, thank you.
And thank you for, for the event at, uh, Castlemont Elementary. I heard it was very well-attended, so you're really covering the whole community.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, I, I know that we're new to Campbell, so we want to be here as often as possible. So, yeah, we had a great community health fair, uh, that the mayor was at, at, uh, uh, Castlemont Elementary School, uh, which was a lot of fun. So it's always looking for opportunities to, to kind of be in the community and help folks. Thanks. Thanks for doing it. Good to see you all.
And thank you, Pablo. So we'll now move on with, um, the rest of the agenda. Uh, we have no communications and petitions this evening. The next item is oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? And I have two, um, speaker cards. The first is Jim Free. If you'd like to come to the podium, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Seven thons, so. That's been looking at each other across the table for quite a few years, haven't you?
Could you speak up a little bit, Jim? It's hard.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, yeah. Uh, my name is Jim Free, and I'm the president of the Campbell Veterans and More Up Foundation. And, uh, I'm here tonight to announce that on the seventeenth of, uh, November, we're going to be having our dinner event over at the Villaragua. And, uh, it's going to be our major fundraiser for the event. A lot of that money is going to, uh, support our, uh, uh, West Valley Community College and, uh, that foundation for, uh, for scholarships for returning veterans. And we've been doing this on an ongoing basis for several years. Of course, it's the theme of being managed by them that is helping to fund that item, to fund that process. So in any event, um, this coming seventeenth at the Villaragua is starting about five thirty in the evening. We're going to have, uh, as our keynote speaker, Command Sergeant Major Patrick McKee. He was born and raised in Lincoln, Nebraska, and is currently serving as a Command Sergeant Major for the sixty-third readiness division. Very distinguished gentleman, and I understand he is quite a speaker to go along with that. So we're looking forward to having him. Our, our very own Dan Fratato is going to be our, our master ceremonies there, and, uh, we're long, he always does a wonderful job, so we're looking forward to having, that you take over there, Dan. So in any event, the tickets are a hundred and fifty dollars per person. Uh, you can buy a table for a thousand dollars, table of ten. And, uh, we'll have a lot of, uh, wine and good, uh, good food there along with it that comes along with all of that. So thank you all so much for allowing me a couple of minutes to mention this. And, uh, we hope you can tell all your friends, and you have one of these in each of your, in each of your boxes up there, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the council. So I have a bunch of these with me today, and I left a bunch of them out on the counter in front. And I will take a bunch of them more, and if anybody in here would like to. And so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Really appreciate it. Our next speaker is, um, Mr. Wu.
Uh, yeah, hello, hello, ma'am. Yeah, uh, uh, so my English is not very good, so I have to read in my phone. But I think my problem is very, uh, straightforward, that I recently bought a house in Campbell and became, uh, uh, yeah, and I became the Campbell resident. And, uh, I found that it is very hard to do the lot split in Campbell because my, uh, I found that my house is located in the PD zone, uh, but the land use is for the single-family residential. So when I purchased the house, I thought that is the, a single-family house, but actually it's now is, is located in the PD zone. And, uh, and then I checked the, the Campbell, uh, Campbell's, uh, uh, the C M C code. And we found that the, uh, uh, the PD zone is not included in the S B nine bill, uh, in Campbell. So that means we cannot, uh, use the S B nine to do the subdivision. And, uh, but, uh, then we asked for the building department, uh, the division to ask, is any other, also a planning division to ask, is any uh, else, uh, way we can try to do the lot split? And, uh, and, uh, the only way is to, uh, to, uh, to, to create a new units in a newly created, created lot. But I cannot afford to create two, like, build two houses, right? Uh, I just want to create the one single house because the, the lot is not big enough. Yeah, and also, so, so I think, and I also checked the other, our sister cities, S B nine requirement. And, uh, like, uh, San Jose, Cuyahoga, San Diego, they all allow the PD zone, uh, for the S B nine. So I, I think, uh, Campbell should, uh, as a, you know, a, um, you know, a, a popular city that should also include a PD type to align the general plan zoning code purpose. Yeah.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Um, we can't take action on it or comment on it, but I will refer your contact information to the staff and, um, have you follow up with them.
Second, thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? And I don't see anybody online. Is that correct? Great. So I'll now, excuse me, move to council announcements. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee and historic preservation board. To find out more about this committee or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at eight, four oh eight, eight six six, two one one seven, or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. Come out with your family and friends for the twenty-eighth annual Oktoberfest from ten A M. to six P M. on Saturday, October twenty-first, and Sunday, October twenty-second. There will be a beer garden filled with top-notch German beers, mouth-watering authentic German food and music, and the downtown area will be lively with a hundred-plus parks and craft foods. There is still time to participate in the sixteenth annual Oktoberfest five K and ten K fun run at nine A M. on Saturday, October twenty-first, at Campbell Park. For more information, please visit campbellca.gov. Free youth heart screening at the Campbell Community Center is scheduled, um, for Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from nine A M. to four P M. At Orchard City Banquet Hall. For additional information, please visit campbellca.gov. And finally, bring your two- and four-legged Little Ghouls, goblins, and superheroes to the creepy crawler Halloween event for some good fun and trick-or-treating on Sunday, October twenty-ninth, from four to six P M. in downtown Campbell. And you can, uh, get additional information on the downtown, uh, Campbell Business Association website. Next, we'll move to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Can you see none? I, any online, um, Andrew? Okay. With that, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items two through nine.
I'll, uh, make a motion to approve items two through nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry and a second by Councilmember Lopez to approve the consent calendar items two through nine. Roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee. Hi. Tonight, we have, uh, no pelvic hearings or introduction of ordinances. The first new business item is item ten, amendment to the classification and salary plan, Plan Check Examiner. And our presenter is Assistant City Manager Angelique Gaeta.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Uh, this is an item involving the addition of Plan Check Examiner to our classification and salary plan. Um, as you're aware, a planned check engineer was included in the adopted budget. Um, however, uh, the community development department has since, um, did further evaluation and feels that an examiner is a more appropriate position, which would end up in a savings to the city of approximately seventeen thousand, um, a year. And for that, so I'm happy to answer any questions. We have Rob here as well to answer the questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Council. Okay, uh, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so we'll bring it back for council discussion and/or a motion. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion then, that the city council adopt a resolution, amendment, classification and salary plan, uh, new classification and corresponding salary range for a plan check examiner and approving a corresponding budget adjustment.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Landry, a second by Councilmember Scazola to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee. Hi. Next item is item eleven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications for operation and management of the Campbell Heritage Theater and authorizing the city manager to negotiate services agreement. And our presenter is Recreation and Community Services Director Natasha Bissell.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of council. Um, tonight staffs requesting that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications for the management and operation of the Campbell Heritage Theater. Um, the agreement with the existing firm is set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the current terms of the, of the agreement require a six-month noticing to that, um, firm in the event that they're not selected for renewal. Authorizing the issuance of the RFQ tonight, uh, will allow for public process to take place and provide ample time for firms to respond prior to the six-month noticing deadline. Um, and the city manager will negotiate a new agreement, which will be brought back to city council for final approval in December. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Natasha. Any questions, Natasha? Okay. If not, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmembers Scazola.
Uh, I was just going to ask if, uh, any of your interview questions are going to involve whether they could get Metallica.
Fortunately, no.
Oh, that's all right. Just had to ask.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Any discussion? How about a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of a request for qualifications RFQ for operation and management of the Campbell Heritage Theater and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a services agreement with the most qualified firm.
So good.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Scazola and a second by Councilmember Fratato to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Scazola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Hi.
Mayor Bybee. Hi. Thank you, Natasha. Number, item number twelve is acceptance of an Office of Traffic Safety, O T S, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program grant. And our presenter is our police captain, Dan Livingston. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, um, the matter before you.
The matter before you is a tentative agreement with Office of Traffic Safety for a grant not to exceed $85,000 in funding for fiscal year '24. It's very similar to the grant that we already have for fiscal year '23. The only addition to this is aside from multi-family funding for traffic and DUI enforcement, we're also able to get replacement of five paging pass devices and also two moving radars for patrol vehicles. So the recommendation would be for council to adopt the OTS grant agreement and allow the city manager to execute the agreement and also approve the budget adjustment recognizing the grant revenue and corresponding grant-related expenditures. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any questions? If not, is there any questions of the public or any comments from the public on this item? If not, return to council for discussion and a motion. Councilmember Lopez?
Just a brief comment. I'm always pleased to see us getting those grants, and I'm glad to hear that. It includes a couple more items this year, so. There are any more comments, I'm happy to make a motion that the City Council adopt a resolution approving an agreement setting forth terms under which the city of Campbell accepts the 2024 selective traffic enforcement program grant from the State of California OTS, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and approving a budget adjustment to recognize the grant revenue and grant-related expenditures.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Lopez, a second by Councilmember Scazola to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Councilmember Scazola.
Councilmember Fruttato.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Mayor Bybee.
Aye. Thank you. Item 13 is Review and Provide Feedback on the Development of New Housing Overlay Zoning Districts and Related Amendments to the Campbell Municipal Code and Zoning Map. And our presenter is our Community Development Director, Rob Eastwood.
Hi, good evening. Rob Eastwood, Community Development Director. So at this point, I'm buying time. Our senior planner to help you is printing a few of the PowerPoint slides. So his presentation, I can do a few introductory remarks. If he's not ready, maybe take a one-minute recess, but hopefully he's back with his slides to help the council. So I'll talk slow. So just a few introductory remarks, we'll see where Stephen's at. So this, you'll remember, the housing element was adopted by the City Council back in April, the first in the region. It includes a number of policies and programs to support affordable housing development. What you'll see happening this year and next year is that bringing forward those policy programs to help affordable housing development. You'll remember a month or two back, we brought forward the RFP for Nexus Studies, and we're starting to work on that. And tonight, we have three programs there before you. So one is an Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. With us doing the housing element, we'll remember this is a tool that can, it's kind of like a local state density bonus program that can help support affordable housing projects, the type that Campbell wants. And then we have two, what are called by-right overlay requirements that will be presented for you. So one thing to remember with these, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone is voluntary. We do think it's a tool that will help affordable housing. The two other tools that will be presented to you tonight, those are mandatory, so under state law. Campbell has to adopt these by-right zonings. Well, Stephen will present to you, one, there's not much discretion by the city, but the city does have, does have some discretion on the other, geographically, where you'd like to put your zones. So with that, if I keep talking, I'll take up Stephen's entire presentation. So I'm hoping he's back with the PowerPoint to hand you that.
We got one, okay. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. Good evening. One second to catch up to where we're at. Okay, so as just captured by our Community Development Director, we are, we have three parts. It's a nice presentation. First is covering the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. We're gonna stop for public comment, go into questions and feedback, and we go to part two and three. So just in terms of an overall background, I believe, yeah, just in broad strokes, the city had gone, had identified the adoption of these programs as part of the 24-year planning housing element. These include the three programs you see here on the screen. Given the similarities and implementation and the timeline for these three, we synchronized the two updates as far as item. As a study session, the goal is to solicit initial direction of feedback on the development of these three new housing overlay zone districts. Okay, so part one is focused on the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. This is typically used as a local program to generally compete with state density bonus law. In the development of an Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, it generally involves the identification of areas where the zone will apply, as well as policy of the identification of policy objectives and incentives that would be offered in exchange, so also known as trade-offs. Again, as previously mentioned, this is identified during the housing element development, but also as a possible tool in the development of the, of the housing element, recognizing the city was contemplating entirely new densities, almost tripling densities in some areas. There had been concern that we might be reaching the city's maximum height limit, civic IP. And this is identified as a potential tool to protect the city's height limit, but also develop housing to meet needs, especially these populations, such as veterans, which we heard from earlier, senior housing, and even, even beyond house, as examples. This is a reminder, this is just one of several programs that are included in the housing element to reach the city's regional housing needs allocation. So the expectation is not any one of these individual programs will get us there, but together, they'll get us hopefully there. And in the, in the development of the housing element, we've programmed that we'd anticipated this would result in somewhere between 270 and 370 units. Exactly, these are kind of the program details that will help us get there. So in the development of an Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, there, we identified three key policy considerations. The first of which is, should the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone be designed to either compete with or complement state density bonus law? Specifically, what are the program tools or trade-offs which we'd like to identify? This is identification of local priorities. What are the things that are most important to the community for developers to achieve? But on the flip side, what are we also willing to give up in exchange? Which are the incentives that we'd be offering? And then finally, where in the city should the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone apply? So this is the first policy consideration. We did present two different models, the competitive model, which generally forces developers to choose between a city program and that offered under state density bonus law. To clarify one point on this, state density bonus law is always an option for developers. You don't, you're creating a program that is competitive enough that they would opt to choose to use our program in favor of state density bonus law. As example, pros of this approach, it provides for greater control and predictability over project outcomes, but it's also very challenging to be competitive. You have the change of state density bonus law with the number of beers. The bar is very high, they keep raising the floor, so to speak. And in the areas where the city can be competitive and offer something meaningful in exchange, you get a developer to choose, a city-backed program is becoming increasingly difficult. As an alternative, we have outlined an option of a complementary model. This is really just stacking up how the state density bonus law largely, so you're saying you get all the same benefits you get under state density bonus law, but in addition to that, we're gonna offer you a couple of additional benefits, provided you meet not one or more local priorities, such as meeting the city's height limit. So just in terms of identifying what are our priorities and a number of potential incentives that may be offered in exchange. So again, going back to, we just went through this comprehensive planning effort, general plan, housing element update. We'd also done a mult, developed new multifamily development design standards for the city. And in the combination of both those efforts, we had identified a number, these four potential priorities for the city. Preserving protective city's maximum height, identifying, addressing the needs of special needs housing. Protection of single-family adjacencies is that example we kept providing of a big building that's looming over that single-family home. How we best protect those from those types of adjacency impacts. And also, the preservation of mixed-use developments. There's certain areas, particularly in the downtown, the city felt very passionate about its support for us to maintain a ground floor in one of those areas, and this would be a priority which would be considered. I'm not gonna go over all the potential incentives that we can offer. You see here on the right, but these, the ones you see here identified on the screen were identified in the housing element, but also by staff. But these include things such as waived utility undergrounding requirements, offering a by-right or ministerial permit process, and possibly reducing, deferring, or even waiving development impact fees or permit fees. So just, this is, this is a good example, just showing how a city program could be structured in a way that would compete with state density bonus law. So on the column on the left, you see developer option one. These are the benefits that a developer will get regardless. I mean, if they are providing a certain number of affordable housing units. So they'd get a certain bonus in exchange for providing 10% of their units to low-rated households. In our program, obviously, we'd get all those things as well, or we'd require those things as well, but in addition to that, we'd have this additional requirement. In addition to that, you have to meet the city's height limit. But instead of you only getting one incentive that you might otherwise be offered under state density bonus law, we'd provide for two or more on-program incentives. It's like on-menu incentives, the idea. The last point on the, on part one here is where should we apply the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone? There's a number of different ways of approaching this issue. One, one key, maybe the most obvious option here is to, state density bonus law apply citywide. Certainly, the city could apply, it's the same, so it could apply citywide as well. Or we could choose to align the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone with specific area plan boundaries, like the Winchester-Bulbruck Master Plan, the Hamilton-specific plan, et cetera. Or we could choose to pick out individual land use designation. So as far as jump on update, we'd have a number of new mixed-use and multifamily housing development. So land use designations, we can say we want to apply to only the highest ones in that category. And on this point, we do have, we have staff recommendation is of applying it citywide, but notably except in single-family areas, which we would intend on being addressed separately by other housing element programs, such as those intending to adopt an SB 10. Okay, and with that, that brings us to our first stopping point. So this would provide us an opportunity for public comment and questions from the council before deliberation, deliberation feedback.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll go to questions of council first before I go to public. Is that, is that the plan? So is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this? Anyone online? Okay, so questions and comments? Or let's start with questions and then follow up with comments. Councilmember Fruttato?
Thank you. A couple of questions. With the establishment of one or more of these zones, or if we should go citywide, are there special incentives that can be applied if builders or developers agree to build additional very low affordable levels? I know you, one of your slides did mention low, but I didn't know if you were just using that in a general term, or if you really did mean to describe really some of the lowest levels. That's, that's the biggest challenge that we have. People are willing to build affordable housing, or they need to by, by standard. But yet, it's the highest or most affordable of the affordable. And as you know, of course, it's getting down to the lowest levels. Can we offer special incentives, or should we, can we make that a provision? What is your thought on that?
Absolutely. Again, as I identified, going back to the special needs population identified, like unhoused, particularly, we'd need either extremely very low or acutely very low. These are entirely new categories that may go above and beyond those brackets identified in state density bonus law, where we've identified a need to meet those special needs populations as an incentive to developers for providing that particular housing type. We could offer, again, benefits in exchange, such as increases in density or others, other, other items that we had identified on that list. So that's absolutely something we could consider.
Another question, and that is, it would seem one of the appropriate standards, if you identify certain geographical areas, might be looking at how easily accessible that area is and whether with increased density, there's enough road space, if you might, if you will, for people to enter and leave somewhat easily without tying up a lot of traffic. I'm not sure exactly what standards we can apply to parking. I know a lot of that has been forgiven, if you will, by the state. But it seems to me that despite the fact that we might locate these next to transit sites, nevertheless, people, for the most part, still have cars and they go places. And they usually still look for a place to park. So I'm just kind of wondering if those are considerations that would be taken into account if you identify specific geographic areas?
I would answer, it can be. So when we're talking about different ways of applying Affordable Housing Overlay Zone citywide, but another option would be aligning with specific area plan boundaries, as an example. One approach that could be taken, I mean, you mentioned earlier, a lot of this stuff has become overcome by events like AB 2097, eliminates parking permits for the half-mile of public transit. You could apply a similar string of where the applicability of the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone is. Or you could rely on other recent actions of the council in the adoption of the multifamily development design. The city had gone through an exercise of identifying those areas which were walkable. So we've, we've already kind of gone through an exercise of mapping portions of the city which we felt would be more walkable than others, thus auto-dependent as a result. So you could, if you could align the approach, saying we want to apply it in those areas.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, can you go back one slide? You say, apply citywide, excepting, is that accept? You're excluding single-family areas, right?
Correct.
I didn't know what excepting, okay. So it's excluding the single-family areas. Okay, and then you, the chart, the table two. Table two, that one right there. So. Sorry, that's fine. Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Any other, Councilmember Lopez, any questions? Councilmember Scazola?
Okay, I was just kind of curious. I also had major concerns about parking. And, you know, I know, obviously, we're trying to push towards having more livable communities, walkable communities, and using public transit a lot more. But, you know, we're such a car culture in the US, we're so radically different than most of the world. And I, you know, even though I'm very supportive of us moving in that general direction as well, it's just the reality is that we can't do it overnight. I know that you're aware of that as well. And so I, my question is, I'm curious about, has there been much talk about, you know, digging down? I mean, I know that has its own problems, per se, but, but, you know, instead of, you know, having our streets just filled with more cars, having these new, newer structures, maybe digging further down into the ground. Is there, is there any, you know, thoughts on that? I know, have developers been thinking, thinking this way at all, or?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to speak to the market, I mean, broadly, market conditions don't support going too many levels down. Most of the housing projects we've seen come forward that are multifamily, stacked flats, buildings, those have a underground, at least one level typically. But again, what we're seeing is, a lot of these Parkinson's has become overcome by events. In areas within approximately AB 2097, developers only building with different market demands or requires. You're not going above and beyond for them.
Interesting, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thanks, I, I did have one question, actually. So whether, I know there's gonna be a discussion of whether do a, could be a complementary approach. Whichever one of those combinations, why not, why is the recommendation, either case, to go with 10%? So, so matching the state density bonus requirement for lower households and not potentially going higher for the overlay zone?
That's a great question. What I offered, so the example you're seeing here on the screen is saying, like, if you'd be offering the same 10%, you certainly don't have to, and we're not even recommending that. We're just looking for initial direction of feedback of what are, kind of going back to that list of potential incentives we might want to offer. The first we're seeing identified here is increase in density or intensity. That would be, in theory, going above and beyond what would otherwise be offered under state density bonus law. So in that example you're seeing, and I'm getting the exact type of reaction I'm hoping for is that you're seeing that in this option, maybe we're not being, we're not giving enough incentive for a developer to choose to follow our local requirement. As a result, the developer might not choose to pursue our Affordable Housing Overlay Zone in favor of state density bonus law. So we might need to continue to calibrate the program a little bit as we, you know, adjust it. But again, a density bonus would be something we could absolutely explore, given greater density. But again, a density bonus would be something we could absolutely explore, given greater density than we could otherwise be granting.
So in the kind of hypothetical example you're talking about, the percentage would be the same, but it'd be greater density, so you get more units? Is that kind of the logic? Not necessarily what's on the screen, but kind of for the hypothetical that you're discussing.
Yeah, I mean, you could go either way. You could increase the density as an incentive. Or, on the other side of the table, you could say, as a concession, we want to increase the allocation. Now, keep in mind, the city already requires 15% of the units to be allocated towards lower-income housing, a mixture between moderate income, as far as the city's inclusionary housing requirements separate from state density bonus law. State density bonus law allows you to overlap the two. But you could say, certainly in exchange for providing 20% of the units in the project is affordable to lower-income households as an additional concession. This is, again, going on that kind of left side of the table, potential priorities. You could easily identify a potential priority for our cities, even greater percentage of affordable.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and I appreciate that. I'll get that in my comments. And then I guess, just before we get into comments, to focus my thinking a little bit. Whatever direction we give tonight, am I correct me if I'm wrong? Is it to kind of narrow down the scope of options, then you'll come back later this year, and then that's when the program will finalize? And then, apart from that, it sounds like you're also thinking that as the program goes through, there might be further modifications if things aren't working. Is that generally correct?
Right. What I'd say is, our next step, so based on the direction provided by the council tonight, our intention is to have a meeting with developers, actually, to say, okay, based on this specific suite of incentives or concessions, what is your likelihood of pursuing this program? We'll come back to that feedback as well, so we'll say, does that move the needle enough for a developer to actually choose our program over state density bonus law? Or do we need to be even more generous? So our intent would be, come back later this year, presenting kind of refinements to the program, expansions of these, you know, based on the priorities you've identified. We'll try to make sure we identify dialing the right amount and extent of incentives that would be necessary to achieve them. Get that feedback and come back.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's all my questions.
And I have one question, Stephen, that I had asked earlier, and I think it might be beneficial to have it answered probably. And it has to do with more process-related. So once the council identifies its priorities and incentives, and that goes forward, and a developer comes in with a proposal, and they choose some of these incentives in order to, with their project, let's say they pick the selection of BMR units and reduce deferred waiver fees. When the project goes through the process and it comes to council, is there any discretion at that point for the council to make changes to that development proposal? And the one that comes to mind is, in the past, we, there's been some discussion about the location of BMR units within a project, within a development. Is there discretion at the council level? Or when a developer submits his proposal or her proposal, are they locked into that and the council has no discretion?
So broadly speaking, what I'd say is, under the Housing Accountability Act, the city must have objective standards, and that would extend to these potential incentives and priorities which we're identifying upfront. Because we'd be codifying them. And that is to say, the city council could establish brackets or tiers saying, "Particular projects in a certain area, we're only going to offer the following incentives. Projects in other areas, we'll offer different incentives." But once it's on the menu, so to speak, and we've codified it, the council would not have discretion at that point to say, "No, I know we offered it, but we, not on this particular project."
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Landry?
Your slides are... I think it's the next one. Okay, so you have the yellow highlighted box that says, "Comply with maximum height." But we could have, like, over by the pruneyard if they wanted to go taller. Would that be an incentive to them?
It could be, or you could say that, yeah, absolutely. So if you structure the program as a single, one-size-fits-all affordable housing overlay zone, and you establish, maintain these maximum height as a requirement or concession grasp, we'd help. That would apply everywhere that that would occur. You could tier it. You could say, "Except, you know, these following benefits will apply in following areas of the city." And you could identify a separate bucket that would apply in different areas, committing some bracketed affordable housing overlay zone.
I see the attorney's ready to push him aside.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. If the question was, can we adopt an ordinance here without going to the voters that would allow exceeding the 75-foot height limit? The answer is no. Have to go to the voters to do that, to include that in our ordinance. There is, of course, as we've said before, a possibility they could use the state density bonus law to exceed the voter-adapted 75-foot height.
Okay, so I think I understand. So... Sorry. So say, for instance, you're over at the pruneyard, and they're showing the housing in the back corner. We cannot buy these developer options, say, you can go over the 75 feet. It would only be they could go over because of the density bonus things that you could add. So in what we're saying is, the incentive is to comply with the maximum height limit, gives you the incentive to then have the other two on menu. But it is very clear, we cannot state anywhere that you are allowed to go over the 75 feet because of the bound.
And if I may, just for the benefit of the council, just kind of going back to these three overarching policy areas. I just didn't want to, the drug release would have reminded me, if it would benefit the council, the planning commission had also reviewed the same item as before you. We did capture their four, their feedback on this point, but just in brief, the planning commission had felt that the AHOZ should complement, as opposed to be on the program tools of those other priorities that they had also spoken to, as opposed to pursuing the maximum height. So you'd recognize certain areas the city might not be as sensitive to maintain that, that perhaps focusing instead on modulation standards, making buildings actually look distinct and different from one another, as opposed to cookie-cutter of the same, might be something that we could look into. And then in terms of where we should apply the disagreement, staff recommendation.
Thank you, Stephen, for that clarification. So that brings us back now to council discussion of these three items. So let's start with item one and have some discussion. Should the AHOZ be designed to compete with or complement state density bonus law? Councilmember Lopez?
Honestly, on this point, I know it's not the recommendation, but this is one where I actually think it would be really helpful to hear from them at that session that you're going to have, rather than me try to hear and imagine what's going to be the best for their models. What I feel stronger about, and what I was getting out of my questions, is that I think personally, the real value of having a affordable housing overlay zone, for me, would be if we can get probably a greater percentage, but maybe it's units, and so maybe you achieve the density, that's fine, too. But basically, getting more affordable housing units. And maybe to cancel Member Fratato's question, maybe it's more, maybe it's just that it's more in the yellow eye categories or other tiers. That's where I'm really interested in focusing the attention. My, I feel that it should be simple, because I think that, or just easily intelligible, whether it's competing or complimenting, because I think one thing that doesn't help with getting projects through the process is just when people don't know what the options are. And I know we'll have a lot of resources to help people navigate that. But on the exact kind of design, are we competing with or complimenting? I'm personally okay, even I'm open, I'm curious how others feel. But to hear the feedback, because one of them may be much more compelling. And to me, that's not necessarily the key part of the decision. It's, I think, maybe some of the program tools. But the key thing for me is just getting more affordable housing units, because I think that's the key thing here, and really maximizing that. So with that, I'll go to program tools, where I also am fairly flexible. A lot of the ones that are offered, I just want to point out one that I really would rather stay away from and probably take off the table, again, curious how my colleagues feel. But I would, of the ones that are included here as potential options, the one I would not be comfortable with is having less desirable locations for affordable units, whether it's having them concentrated, or just, you know, I feel that gets in a dangerous territory once you start doing that. And apart from moving, you know, you have to solve the issues with sigma and quality of life. I think, really, our view should be, what's the experience going to be like of these future Campbell residents? And I think we should do everything and maximize that positive quality of life. We do that through these other decisions by, you know, making sure that they were existing evidence aren't impacted and, you know, and all these other decisions we're doing for existing residents. I think we should be looking just as much for those future residents. And so I'm really comfortable with having that on the table as an incentive. The other ones, again, I'm pretty open to, and I'm open to hearing what moves the needle for them. The one that I'm kind of on the fence about is undergrounding of utilities, because I think that has pretty significant pros and cons, but I'm open to leaving it on there. And then, in terms of where it should apply, I lean heavily towards the staff recommendation of having something be citywide, kind of in keeping with what I was saying earlier, that I think that just for simplicity's sake, and also probably just our sanity in drafting the ordinance, that I think that's going to be simpler. I'm open to a kind of tiered approach, where maybe, possibly in some sections, you go beyond that. But I don't want to have one bucket over here and one bucket over here. I think simplicity is the best. So that would be my general feedback. If that's not enough direction to narrow it down at this point, I'm open to hearing it more, you know, having more discussion, because I didn't exactly answer the first question. But that's what I think the key points are, but curious to hear what others think.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scizol? Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Sergio about the complement or compete. I would really like to see what the developers have to say. I didn't see a big, significant difference. There was, what was it? There were two, two or three. I already asked about the height. But I would really like to see what they have to say, and why create a whole program if you're not receptive to it? If that's the feedback that you're getting. We're supposed to go through all and stick to just the one.
Well, one, you can go to...
Okay.
All three.
All right. So now, under program tools, what do we want them to provide our local priorities? I do not want any more reduction in parking. You guys have heard me numerous times about, we're basically saying to low-income people, you don't get to have a car if you get this low-income housing. I do not agree with that. I've argued towards our assemblymen and our senators. You're telling people that are low-income, you don't deserve a car, because we're not going to give you a space. So I don't want to see anything new about reducing parking. The undergrounding and the reduced fees, my concern is about what that's going to do to our budget. And because everything else we have is cost recovery for fees and all that, that how, like, if we were building, what, up to 4,000 units? What's that going to do to our budget if we basically say fees are reduced or not? Now, it is an incentive to reduce them, but I want to understand the bigger picture of what that means. And the same goes with undergrounding of utilities. So the developer doesn't underground it, but the next building over, whose commercial is going to underground it? Got to go back up the pole, over, back down, and, you know, it's like, underground here, now now you got to go overground, now you got to go back. It gets pretty complicated. So I'd like to understand a little more about undergrounding. And then if we do allow that as one of the incentives, where does it go into the budget? That if we still want to have them underground, or we still want that project to be underground, then does that mean the city is going to pay for the undergrounding versus leaving it not under the ground? Okay, and then I think that answers those two. And where should it apply? I guess, a large part of the city. I haven't seen much of the mapping about, like, the pruneyard. Like I've said before, from Southwest Expressway to the pruneyard, to me, that is the highest concentration that we could go, say to go over the 75 feet, but I'm certainly willing to, you know, the density bonus and go taller. But what incentives could we do for that corridor from the pruneyard to Southwest Expressway to encourage a higher density element there? And I don't know how that plays out in the actual overlay zone, but I could see that as a designated, whether it's area, or however you can do that to be its own little overlay area. Does that make sense? You're looking at me with a question on your face, though. You get rough on, okay.
Councilmember Fratato, any comments?
Well, I'll make a couple of comments here. As far as undergrounding, actually, I think that is the future, that we should try to work toward that goal. Appreciate the potential additional costs of doing that. And perhaps there are some other incentives we could provide if someone is willing to underground. But I'm also concerned with what Vice Mayor Landry said in terms of certain sections of an area that are undergrounded and certain ones that aren't. I'd like to see a more uniform undergrounding policy in a given area, rather than up and down and so on, if we're going to do it. Perhaps there are some incentives, like I said, that we could offer for developers who are willing to undertake that expense. And as far as whether we should apply it to the whole city or not, at this point, I'm just not sure whether we should or try to identify specific areas. The city is pretty well-built out, and so in some respects, it's hard to pick certain areas or for us to sort of suggest certain areas. I'm willing to listen to more input, I think, maybe from staff or from potential developers, what their comments are and so on in that regard.
Councilmember Scizol?
Yeah, I'm going to be really interested in this meeting with the developers and their opinions. Like, I can't wait to get the feedback on that. And, but I'm also, you know, I want to know more from the public. I know the last time that I remember, I was one of a few people that responded to the question, like, hey, what should we do in regards to housing? You know, this is before my time on council. And I suggested, we're talking about height a lot right now. And I suggested, much like Dan was saying, we're really built out. And so it just seemed logical to me that we're going to have to go up. But then I found out about the 75-foot height limit. And then I found out, oh, it would take the voters to remove that, and so developers can build higher. And then I had suggested that, yes, that we go towards, you know, where there already are taller buildings in existence, obviously, the pruneyard, that it would be pretty, I mean, I don't want to say easy, but to just like, boom, you know, we have this beautiful new building here, it's about 75 feet, it's very dense with housing. So I just want to restate, I really want to see if that's an incentive for the developers, then I think that the people of Campbell also might be interested in that as well. Because one of the things I hear all the time is feedback about, "Don't ruin my neighborhood." I live here, I love my neighborhood, I love the feel of it, and I don't want a bunch of new homes that don't match the neighborhood to suddenly pop up. So in my opinion, you know, you might as well call if the voters say yes to it and removing the height restriction. You might as well call something like the Save Campbell Neighborhoods, you know, measure, or whatever you want to call it. But that's, anyways, long story short, I really am eager to hear back from the developers and see if that's a real incentive, because it feels to me like it could be a solution to a lot of problems.
Okay, thank you. And I'm leaning towards a program that complements the incentives and requirements provided by state density bonus law, because I believe that that really provides greater flexibility in the bottom line of trying to achieve our goal of more affordable housing. And so it provo- it opens up options, um, that I feel, um, that I I don't know that it does, I don't know that our policy should necessarily be dictated by what developers want to develop here. I think it should be more of a policy and and what we're trying to achieve. Um, as far as the, um, utility undergrounding, I I have a bit of of concern about that. And I I just wonder if possible, if there's a way to, um, have some type of a fee waiver. Uh, depending on the size of the project or how, um, some some, a large developer may be able to afford undergrounding. But a smaller development may not be able to have that ability. So if there's a way to structure or or have a fee waiver on on the undergrounding requirements, um, if that could be looked at as a possibility. And I will concur with, um, Councilmember Lopez about the BMR units and the and the location. I know that has been an issue in past projects. And so I don't necessarily believe that that should be on the on the list of the incentives. And as far as, um, where it should apply, I think it should be citywide, accepting the single family, uh, area and and, uh, one key thing is to really preserve the, um, adjacency standards where where possible. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, just, uh, uh, a few comments. That's the drawback of of going first is that, uh, everybody else make makes great points. Um, one is I I couldn't agree more that we driven by, uh, why, by our goals and what we wanna accomplish. So while I I I'm interested, I think I'll probably be, I I'm interested in in the feedback insofar as it's helpful in achieving our goals. If 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 it is, um, not so much for that driving the the entire program. If if it doesn't make sense for what we didn't wanna do, which I think ultimately is to get more, uh, affordable housing units. And and I I wanna, uh, clarify, maybe this was obvious, maybe it wasn't. Uh, but, uh, for in terms of going citywide, I was kinda using that shorthand for the staff recommendation. So recognizes citywide, accepting the the single family neighborhoods, which which I I I think is is, uh, uh, reasonable. And and, uh, is a fairly significant significant part, uh, uh, of of the city as well. So I think that's doing it in a way that's both simple, straightforward and it still, uh, ma- makes sense for existing neighborhoods. Um, just, just one point I I wanted to to just offer up as kind of food for thought. I don't I don't wanna get, um, too hung up on the height limit, which is probably beyond the scope of this for for the reasons that 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 Bill mentioned anyway. But, um, there there's a little bit and and, you know, this may have changed. I I may be wrong on on some of this, but there's a little bit of a U-shaped curve sometimes with the the cost benefits that that you get with housing. So I I I don't think that where we're gonna, uh, be seeing a lot of projects pencil out is is with, uh, big skyscrapers. Just because then the costs start to go back up. I I I think it's kind of in in that middle zone where it probably doesn't need to exceed the existing, uh, height limits. That will probably get interest in projects that'll pencil out and in the current market. And, uh, where I think there's room for negotiation with these kind of, uh, policy, uh, uh, techniques. So so I I I think we're we're hitting, um, in in the right areas. And and then finally, listening to the discussion around the the undergrounding. Uh, I I mentioned I was kind of on the fence. My my desire at this point would be if if you could, um, take the feedback, maybe have the discussion and 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 gather, uh, some some feedback. Uh, and I'd be interested in hearing some some proposals for ways to address. I think that the mayor had some, uh, good ideas, um, for, uh, for, you know, maybe large developments make more sense, maybe others. I I so I I think there's probably thoughtful ways around it. Uh, again, I'm I'm, uh, open to it. I I see potential issues on on both sides. But I also think we may be able to come up with with some policy, uh, you know, designs to to try to mitigate some of those those issues. So I'm interested in hearing more now that you you've heard our feedback on on that area. I don't wanna rule it out at this point, if it could potentially be something that moves the needle and is impactful. But I I just don't know at this stage.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, um, respond to what you were saying about the underground. Maybe there's a tiered approach. We've been talking a little bit about that. Where if you're, say, you only have sixteen units, you pay twenty-five percent of what it normally would have cost. If thirty units, you would pay fifty percent. So I'm I'm thinking of like what was going on with the off-ramp at Hamilton, where the different developments along the street paid a portion of it. So then collectively, when you had enough pay in, then we could widen Hamilton. So because we had a project that came in over on Harriet. And the closest utility pole to go back down was like fifty feet farther down the block. And they would have had to rip up all the sidewalks to get to that. So it may not be feasible at the time of the housing development to do just their underground portion. Again, you may have to go broader to get to the pole or to the utility to go back up. So if there could be a s- maybe a scale of where sixteen homes, you pay twenty-five percent, thirty home. But then go back to our budget and we need to really be seeing how these things are gonna impact our budget. If we do absorb an underground project later and we only have fifty percent of the funds, then, you know, just like the reduced fees. You know, where's our budget gonna end up on all this?
Any other comments? So. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know. I just wanted to know that did we provide enough feedback or?
Yeah, I was looking at my notes. I think we have enough. Or enough feedback to go forward.
Okay.
So, I mean, one thing we'll say is we'll do outreach with developers. I mean, the whole point was to to get, tell the developers our priorities. This is how we wanna build the program around focusing on this, get technical feedback on how to fit the program to work. And then we can come into what comes back to you. Last thing I was gonna say, I didn't wanna be a web blanket, uh, as Stephen has mentioned. These programs have gotten, begun much, much harder to be successful because the floor has reached so much. So again, I, uh, we put on the screen, ideally, we get a lot more affordable units out of this, that was the point. But, um, it's just looking at the research and data and how every year state housing laws push the floor higher. It's it's just a little harder to make these programs successful. Try to put everything we can into it to make sure that happens.
Well, and I would add that I I think it's also important, uh, uh, upon the city to, um, I mean, n- not only hear the feedback from developers, but it's it's a partnership and it's, we all have to work together. And there has to, there has to be a give and take, um, especially in the area of affordable housing. And and if if there's not a program to incentivize that, then we're 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 gonna be, we're spinning our wheels. We're we're continuing to 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 go down this, what I call a rabbit hole, and we're not achieving anything. So it it has to be, um, there has to be some support and from the development community as well as a partnership with the city, working together to try and achieve, what it is that's important, and that's to, uh, have affordable housing. So if you wanna move on to our next portion?
Greatness and feedback, and congratulations for getting through the first part. Okay, so these next two parts, just in broad strokes, uh, we've kinda combined the presentation because there's a lot of overlap. Particularly, i- i- in particular in relation to the ministerial buy right from the process. So the reason why we program these in the board and even our presentations, because there's an opportunity that staff's identified a potential overlap. Uh, these two overlays to some extent. And that, um, first of which is the reuse overlay. So, um, the first thing I'd say about this is it's probably being dictated by state law. So this is an obligation the city already must provide for for this particular overlay. Uh, it really applies to sites that had been included in prior housing element cycles. Generally sites that are non-bake-in from the prior housing element or vacant, where they're included in two prior consecutive housing cycles. So total, the city has sixty, uh, some odd reuse sites which have been identified. There's not any real discretion for the city to, um, exert in the selection of these sites or the requirements that come with them. So staff is really just acknowledging, recommending the council to acknowledge the requirements. Staff will be working on, uh, developing the ordinance to implement it. And you're, as you're seeing here on the screen, these are the reuse sites, which would be required to allow for ministerial buy right permanent processing. When at least twenty percent of the housing units are made available to lower income households. That's largely just an obligation the city just needs to acknowledge. So with that, um, the buy right housing overlay, uh, is a, largely it's a consequence of the city not meeting its compliance deadline for the housing. So as we're all, as we're aware, the city, uh, most housing elements need to be adopted by this January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three deadline. Uh, the city of Campbell did not adopt its housing element by that deadline, but, uh, we weren't alone. Uh, in fact, no city in Santa Feira County had met that compliance deadline. We were actually among the first, we're actually the first in letter from HCD. So we did really well in that regard, but still didn't meet the the requirements. Uh, the city, uh, but as a consequence of failing to meet that deadline, city among all these other cities, uh, needed to include a program. For our particular case, it's program H three E, which required the rezoning of lower income, uh, to meet the city's lower income housing shortfall. Uh, you can see on the screen the map of how we get there, but largely it's just taking the allocation of the city's lower income regional housing allocation. Subtracting out a number of, uh, units pipeline and other numbers that get you to a total of one thousand twenty-four units. Which is effectively, uh, which is effectively the city's, uh, lower income housing shortfall. And based on the number, we need to identify sites in the city, which cumulatively add up to hitting that that number. So that's really what the, uh, the problem statement here is. Uh, in addition to needing to hit that target of that one thousand twenty-four units in total, uh, there are requirements of sites that are included in the buy right housing overlay. Similar way to the the reuse overlay, the city has to allow for ministerial or buy right processing with twenty percent of the units are made affordable to lower income households. Uh, the city is also required to permit exclusively the development of exclusively residential uses of buildings. Which means if we have a requirement for a mixed use component, that would not be applicable within this overlay. Uh, additionally, if a project were to develop a mixed use project, at least fifty percent of the floor area of that project would be required uh, to be residential in character or in context. Uh, additionally, the city would have to provide a combine, all of these sites, as previously mentioned, to meet that that shortfall. And then in the selection of sites, there's a little bit of, uh, uh, methodology to it. We we can only pick through some rules. We'd only pick sites which could support the development of sixteen or more. So you can't like pick a small, tiny lot and apply it. That we have a sufficient size. And then secondly, they have to have an assigned density of thirty units a day, which kind of limits our pool to some extent of the sites to be this one. So on the buy right housing overlay, we have a little bit more discretion. And as as a result, we've identified two key policy, uh, decisions to consider. Uh, the first, is it more important for us as a community to protect our mixed use requirements where they, where so really avoiding those areas in the city which have a mixed use requirement in the assignment of our buy right house, buy right housing overlay? Or attempting to minimize our buy right views? This is minimizing the number of sites which will not be subject to discretionary processes. Where we could possibly strategically overlap our reuse, their buy right overlay. To try to avoid allowing more sites to just be ministerial in nature. And then secondly, um, assuming that, um, minimizing buy right review is more important to us. Where in the community should we try to maximize receiving public input? Should we try to park at those areas of the city which, uh, were more significant projects and fries where it might see developed? Or should we try to retain that public input process, public catering process, uh, in residential, single family, residential, single family areas? Which is conveyed by option two and and materials. So again, just gonna go over these options in 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 summary, some of the pros and cons. Again, option one, uh, which is presented in the report is intended to maximize public input for significant projects. By really targeting like higher density area by, turning it, the sites of, uh, with the, uh, uh, the, uh, the highest density. It would minimize site subject to buy right review by overlapping to the greatest extent possible with our reuse overlay. Uh, the second option, it, but as a result, as a consequence, it would impact our mixed use site, the number of sites in the city, which are our subject to mixed use site requirement. Uh, option two, which should seek to maximize input in residential areas, which would target, uh, reuse sites, but also sites with a lower density. Again, same same situation, but instead of, um, preserving, protecting higher density sites, it would target those areas and lower density areas. And option three, last is just, we would go about an approach of methodology. Again, we're just looking for broad, like broad guidance. In in assigning and picking sites, should we be trying to avoid mixed use sites as our primary principle? So with that, it brings us to the end of this part. Vice Mayor, other option, if you have to stop for questions and feedback.
Any members of the public? Questions of the council? I mean. Comments? Do you wanna go first this time, Sergio?
I really appreciate you're breaking, you know, taking something, uh, fairly complex and and breaking it down, uh, really a simple series of of decision trees. Um, I I'm supportive of of a staff recommendation for for the reasons I, I think there's trade-offs to to any of them. But I think as much as possible, preserving some of the strategic decisions we we've made, uh, uh, about where some of those mixed uses, uh, belong, I I think is is positive. Um, I think the numbers are not all that much difference, uh, be between the two options. But but I think the staff recommendation strikes a good balance.
Vice Mayor Landry, can you go back one second?
Okay, so you're recommending option three, which protects the mixed use, which pretty much helps protect our retail sales tax, right?
It's meant, yes.
That's what its goal is to be, to keep the sales tax.
Correct, it's also emphasized the development of channels on fire, um, our economic development console. It also lends to a greater sense of community. Provides a greater amenity throughout the city. There's a lot of reasons, this is the point, to preserve mixed use. They go beyond just the retail sales tax, but it that is a consideration.
But I like the option about ma- maximum input in residential areas. Is there a way to combine two and three?
We could, I mean, in the selection of sites, which again, it would come down to like priority. If if the priority comes out to maximizing, uh, protect, like say, protecting mixed use. We we've really identified the report, even under that approach, one site would still be, a site which is already, which wouldn't have a mixed use requirement, would still need to give up that requirement. So we're already at the cost. If we, if we choose option three, you'd only be giving up even more. So we didn't know, we wouldn't know which additional sites to pick or how far you wanna go with, um, trying to preserve discretionary review processes in residential neighborhoods. Like how much more would you be willing to give up? You're already kinda cutting up. Under option three. We really don't have a lot of bandwidth, unfortunately.
Councilmember Fratato?
Um, I have some concerns about giving a lot of emphasis to protecting mixed use. Um, you know, generally, I think that's a, it's a good idea to have mixed use. But I I think there are a lot of sites where the, uh, commercial element is just, uh, not being utilized. It's, uh, the interest is low. And I I think it's, uh, more of a negative incentive for builders that might wanna build affordable housing. If they also must include mixed use as a part of that, it just becomes more expensive to them, I think. Because it's, um, harder to fill a lot of these, uh, smaller retail spaces. I'm leaning more towards options one or two. Perhaps, uh, with a slightly greater emphasis to option two. But I'm willing to listen to more input in that regard. It's just that I have a little bit of concern about giving so much priority to mixed use.
Any other comments? I'm leaning towards option three, but.
I'll go back to what I was asking and what I'm kind of in Dan's camp here about. I've seen a lot of the small areas of commercial use, like when the economic development person came. They were talking about like office spaces open or a lot of it's, a lot of office spaces available. And so if we start doing all these mixed use, how much really is the commercial aspect gonna be filled and viable and and used? And so I I would like to maximize the input in residential areas, but I'm really looking at mixed use and. But I'm really looking at mixed use and protecting our sales tax, our retail sales tax. And one of the parcels shown on here for reuse is the Safeway site. That's a big chunk of sales tax. So if there isn't some mixed use put back in, then we're not getting sales tax. But in another area, it would be to me more important to put it to the maximum use input for residential.
Yeah, I'm also leaning towards option three. I I mean, not just for the sales tax. I I do, I believe staff is usually right in most things. And I I agree with them in this. And and I think that, yeah, I also, I brought up many times, several times that. The concerns about how much empty office space we have. However, when you have these new. Construction, they're very appealing. You know, it's like I I I'm assuming, I don't know, but I'm assuming a lot of that empty. Space is kind of older buildings and they're they're specifically just like office spaces or things of that nature. Whereas this, you know, I mean, we've seen them, built many of them over the years already. Where there are, it's also about who's in those shops, you know, if the people want it. They'll survive. That business will survive and thrive. You know, I I don't see too many. Office buildings being, I'm I'm picturing more like lovely shops and, you know, eateries, coffee shops. Little boutiques, things that's a lot of things that we have similarly in our downtown area, but now it's going to be more spread. Now we're going to have like many downtowns throughout our community. I actually find number three really appealing to me personally.
House member Lopez?
I had a question. I wanted to clarify something. I think that Stephen mentioned. Has there been input either directly or indirectly into some of the thinking behind this from the economic development team?
The only thing I have, it's not a trick question. Mixed use, remember back, the city did try to get very nuanced, focused, very different. But if we go back to the standards we adopted, relaxed, the mixed issue part in a lot of parts of the city. Only focused on areas where we thought it was important. And the economic development consultant had recommended to be more exact in doing that and have the requirements be that the space is actually. Very shallow spaces because the developer likes them. But to hold the line and require them that actually a restaurant. The mixed use we have is is much more focused on these types.
Yeah, and and I I know I wasn't directly answering my question, but what my question was getting at is that is exactly that, that that I think we we've been. Very strategic and so I I just want to preserve as many of those options as possible. And to the last point that you're making, the possibility that 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 concerns me is is. Essentially having a go to requirement to have fifty percent of the floor area be be residential and and using that kind of option. Have those really attractive spaces by by making them less desirable. I I think in places where you've seen mixed use really struggle is in like San Jose where they're built as as office spaces and now. There there's news arc recently about a prominent one that's trying to sue to get out of those requirements, say they they can't fill them. And then that really starts to create light. I I don't think that that's what we have here and I want to preserve those options as much as possible.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Do you have enough to?
Just to kind of wrap up here, obviously, we're meeting tonight at our council, city council study session. Again, just based on the feedback provided, we do a tenant meeting with developers. Prepare a final list of priorities sessions from those developers and hope to return feedback. And again, just to reiterate, we we hoped it to come back later this year, going back to planning commission first, obviously for recommendation. And then later back to council for a final adoption of of this.
Can I make a comment? One other thought on the process, and I think this goes to the earlier point about, you know, the mayor's emphasizing about. We have our goals. There has to be some 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 given and take and I I think one piece of unsolicited advice. I I would I would give throughout this process is that so some of the feedback that we hear may be short term. Because there's a very particular environment, particular challenges right now with finance rate and supply chain, all these things that that we're still seeing. And I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that we're not just creating a project for this year, next year, but or a program, but something to to really. Carry through the vision that that we we're we're creating of of how we want the community to develop for the future. And it's I think to sift out when you come back to us with recommendations. Why, you you know, what what are they saying is is going to move the needle? Because that's a challenge that they're saying now and what is really going to be impactful in the long term? And and that may or may not be, you know, have overlap, but that's something I'll be really interested to hear.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I didn't get to say this earlier, but I really appreciate how you guys took a very big, complex. Lots of information and really fun with it down. You always use the funnel analogy. But I I was expecting to be here almost till eleven o'clock. Just the fact that you were able to pare this down and get it to really, I like the way you stop at each of the points. Because before you'd be overwhelmed of, you know, just an hour of presentation and this, I like the stopping, stop, start, stop. I think that sounds really well. Kudos to you, Stephen.
And I want to reiterate what Vice Mayor Landry said. Thank you very much for a good presentation and trying to. Keep it focused so that we were kept on point. And I also want to acknowledge the work of our planning intern who contributed a lot to this report. Hannah Meeks, Hannah Meeks, and I I'm not sure if she's still, I know she was a summer intern, but I I please pass along. Our thanks to her for her input into this. It was a summer internship, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyway, good job all the way around. So that takes us to item fourteen, council committee reports. Start?
I have no report tonight.
Okay, Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, I'm gonna kind of combine a couple things as tradition to committee reports. I attended the library finance committee last week. Their surplus. I can't remember the number now, but. They had planned on a potential litigation and it didn't happen and they saved money and. Extra in the budget. I can't remember the dollar amount. Not coming to my brain right now, but I was happy to hear that they do have a surplus. In the finance budget. I attended the park dedication at Virginia Park. Thank you to Todd and. Getting everything together there. The things that aren't a committee, but that I did attend, unfortunately, the mayor was not able to attend. So I attended the solidarity event for Israel at the Jewish Community Center last week. And I want to say thank you to our police department. I see Dan still over there. It was quite a show of force. But that Gary was there, he got to sit up on the stage and our officers were out with Moscato, so I do appreciate you guys being there. And the last one is, I think you might have remembered, we had Alberto from the carpenters junior came and spoke to us. And he invited me to Women in Construction that I attended last Friday. And it was great. They had busloads of women, girls in school. They also opened it up. There were men there. But it was very impressive. Every contractor booth had two or three women there to talk to the other woman. So it was very nice to attend and I gave the feedback that nobody had a set of drawings to read. And that all these carpenters need to read a set of drawings, so he's invited me back next year to sit and talk and show how to read a set of plans.
Council member Lopez?
Yeah, also, I attended a lovely ceremony for Virginia Park, so that that was really great. I also regretfully was out of town for the solidarity event at the Jewish Community Center. So I, you know, very glad you were there, glad our our police were were there. It sounds like it was a. Really impactful event. Couple of other highlights, I also attended the along with a a couple others, including the mayor. The fiftieth anniversary celebration for Wesley Manor, which which was great, is great to see our our Campbell police there. As as well, as well as Santa Clarifire. I attended. A VTA board of directors meeting where among other things, one of the things that was touched on. Was the report that that came out about some costs and and delays. Cost increases and delays to the our Silicon Valley project. But the real, it was presented as an informational item. And so I do want to mention the real discussion of that. And delving more to the specifics will actually be at a public workshop that's going to be happening this Friday. Nine AM at ETA headquarters and that's that's going to be a meeting solely focused on the the specifics and questions around that project. So I know there's interest from a number of members of the community. I I encourage any folks who are interested to attend. It will also be streamed publicly and available for for Zoom participation. Also attended and a meeting of the, a few meetings of the Bay or Air District. One that I'll mention is one of the committees that I sit on met and discussed. Possibly, there's widespread feedback from the committee members in terms of the grants that the Air District administers. To move toward funding bicycle pedestrian improvements, which will probably require some tweaking of the current criteria. Used to evaluate grants, but I I think definitely something for our departments to be aware of that there may be more. Funding available there that that was not possible in the past. And all has to do with how you calculate VMT and and carbon impacts and all these things. Which as technologies change, have to be updated and tweaked. And so that that may be more possible starting next year. So I'll be sure to share more information as as that develops. And. I I think those were the key ones. I I also attended, not our assembly member, but a assembly member, Ash Karo's. Veggie Fest a couple weeks ago and that was a really fun annual event that the sponsors in San Jose. With vendors and educational events for for vegan and vegetarian options. That was a lot of fun.
I'm pleased to see the VTA board approved the use of some of its property to allow the many housing units to go up there. So I thought that was great, but you support.
Council members.
So I also attended the Virginia Park dedication, which happens to be within my district and I loved what I saw. All due credit to Public Works Department. It's a beautiful, cute little park, you know, meant mostly for toddlers. The mayor's grandson apparently was climbing all over the new equipment. Yeah, before, that's the mayor privilege, right? And there was also another little one there at the dedication who was doing the same. It's really cool. There's a lot of fun stuff about it. It's like a like a animal noise feature there. You press buttons and you get to hear the different animal noises. I met some of the constituents, some of my constituents there and they are just all smiles, you know, very exciting. So it was great. It was, I love being there. Fantastic. Also, I attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors meeting. And this one, we just had a study session that was focusing on some of the programs. There are many programs that are provided by SVC. But this one was focusing more on like what people can do at home in their own homes. It was focused on, well, one thing I found interesting was, obviously, if it's your home. It's much easier to feel naturally incentivized, like, oh, yeah, well, my water heater broke. You know what? Maybe I will update it with a heat pump type water heater and just go away from gas altogether. And you know, there's education programs, that's part of it too, that let the public know about, you know, the advantages of of these technologies. But another fascinating thing to me is that it's not just the public awareness that's that's being done. It's also educating the contractors themselves, because some of these technologies, it's very easy for us to just keep doing the old ways. Like, oh, yeah, just replace it with a new gas powered water heater. But there are programs such as. Like an actual, I I don't know if Academy is overstating it, but to get contractors educated where they actually learn how to install these. They also get the all the data so that they can tell somebody that they're, oh, my my water heater is broken and you replace it. Well, hey, there, I actually have this other option for you if you're interested. So really good study session. One of the things that came came up, came out about, the question I had was, how do you get landlords to want to go? Energy efficient and electrified, because there might not be so much motivation. And the thought right now is, and of course, SVC is still thinking about this, but to help motivate in a way of them being amenities. Yeah, because people do find these to be, you know, they're just nicer, quite frankly, you know, having solar, all these things. Because that's something that that I thought about. It's like, well, mostly tenants are paying their own electric bills. So that would, you know, you'd just think, well, most landlords would be like, well, that's their problem. I don't, why would I put so, why would I invest the money in that? But these are amenities that more and more people are, they're just kind of almost demanding at this point. So anyways, it was just a really good study session. Obviously, we had our own, just in our last meeting, we had our own, one of our own. It's not coming to me right now, but the winner, she went all electric within her home. She's had electric car. And so it's just the future and it's great seeing this study session. We're going to have many more study sessions about specific. So it was great.
Great, thank you. And I have a few items. I attended the Friends of the Heritage Theater meeting last Thursday. Also, the Cities Association meeting and we received updates on the planning collaborative. A presentation on mental health and a presentation on domestic violence and it was all very informative information. I attended the Virginia Park dedication and also the fiftieth anniversary celebration of affordable housing at Wesley Manor. Along with my colleagues, Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Fertado. And we were presented with a really nice certificate recognition. That is presented to the city, the Campbell Police and the Santa Clara County Fire for our support and service to the residents of Wesley Manor. So I wanted everybody to see that and maybe we could find a spot to hang that somewhere at City Hall. And in the meantime, I also received in the mail today a photo of the presentation. So I'll share that with the council. And that's it for. Oh, you got one? Did you get one too?
No, while we pass around, it reminded me of two things. I I, there was also League of Calqueware Cities Peninsula Division event that I helped put together for on mental health. And I appreciate Councilmember Fertado attending and and I I mention that because there may be some. Potentially state resources that we may want to follow up on, because I know that's a priority area. And and secondly, we had our monthly meeting of the Campbell Interfaith Ministerial Association. And and I just mentioned that because I want to thank Community Development Director Robbie Swed for showing up and sharing information about what the city is doing on housing. And affordable housing and homelessness, which is an area of great interest for every single one of these institutions. And in many cases, they've been partners and participants in things like the housing element. And so I I know they really appreciate having our our staff show up there.
So anyone else going once, twice? All during the meeting.